Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting. It is July 7th, excuse me, 17th. It is 6:00 PM. Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please be with us as we make the decisions for Murfreesboro in your will. Please be with the leaders of our state and federal government as well, and please be with those around the world who are in your need, both spoken and unspoken. It is in your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have a lot of people here to speak at our, our public hearing, but did we have anyone sign up for public comments on actionable items?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, let's move to ceremonial items. Hey, we have, we've got some ladies here tonight who made history, and I'm glad, y'all don't worry that we're having a discussion on the landfill tonight, everybody is here to see y'all. They knew you, y'all were coming. So, round of applause, exactly right. So, the TSC Murfreesboro Girl Soccer Team, under the outstanding leadership of Coach Billy Lewis, has exemplified excellence, teamwork, and determination throughout the 2024-2025 season, whereas the team achieved an undefeated historic 2024-2025 season, capturing the Division One State Championship and the TWSA Regional Championship, triumphing over teams across a multi-state region, including Tennessee and several southeastern states. Whereas their success represents not only athletic achievement, but also the spirit of dedication, discipline, and sportsmanship, serving as role models for young athletes throughout our community. And whereas the team's journey culminated in a strong showing at the Southern Regional Championship in Texas, where they proudly represented our state and region on a highly competitive national stage. And whereas Coach Billy Lewis has provided exceptional guidance, mentorship, and commitment to his players, shaping not only champions on the field, but leaders off the field. Whereas we recognize and commend the TSC Murfreesboro Girl Soccer Team and Coach Billy Lewis for their outstanding accomplishment, and bring honor to our city and our region in the sport of soccer. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim July 17, 2025, as TSC Murfreesboro 2012. So the 2012 is there, for those of y'all who are not in soccer, that's the date that How cool is that? they graduate, that they started, right? All right, let's move to our consent agenda.
The year they're born.
The year they're born, right. But if you go through there, 2030, 2030, is that right? Yeah. So, the TSC Murfreesboro 2012 Girl Soccer Team Day, inside the City of Murfreesboro, You have four items on our consent agenda. which means y'all ladies can't drive yet, but if you were to get a ticket, you can Is there anything that needs to be pulled off of the agenda? 100% get out of it today. And urge all citizens to join in this recognition and honoring these fine ladies. All right, seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Congratulations.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to old business. We have ordinance 25026 to amend City Code Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages, and this is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to land use matters. We have item six, ordinance 25OZ21, rezoning property along Olas Castas Road. This is first reading. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All three of these items under land use matters, under old business, were before the City Council for public hearing and presentation back on June 26th. So I won't give you another presentation unless you would like, and, but I am here to answer any questions that you may have regarding any of the next three items, and the applicants are present as well if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item seven, ordinance 25020, amending the zoning ordinance school and institutional group assembly use. This is first reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item eight, Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for Property Along Jürgen Road.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, and this is for the Plan of Services Resolution 25RPSA22, and then we'll need to, to also do ordinance 25OZ22, correct, Mr. Tucker?
That's correct.
All right, this is for the Plan of Services. We have a motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item eight, Plan of Services Resolution 25RPSA22, and then we'll need to, to also do ordinance 25OZ22, correct, Mr. Tucker?
That's correct.
All right, this is for the Plan of Services. We have a motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business. We have ordinance 25026 to amend City Code Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages, and this is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to land use matters. We have item six, ordinance 25OZ21, rezoning property along Olas Castas Road. This is first reading. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All three of these items under land use matters, under old business, were before the City Council for public hearing and presentation back on June 26th. So I won't give you another presentation unless you would like, and, but I am here to answer any questions that you may have regarding any of the next three items, and the applicants are present as well if you have any questions for them.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item seven, ordinance 25020, amending the zoning ordinance school and institutional group assembly use. This is first reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item seven, ordinance 25020, amending the zoning ordinance school and institutional group assembly use. This is first reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item eight, Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for Property Along Jürgen Road.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, and this is for the Plan of Services Resolution 25RPSA22, and then we'll need to, to also do ordinance 25OZ22, correct, Mr. Tucker?
That's correct.
All right, this is for the Plan of Services. We have a motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move to land use matters. This is item nine, the Plan of Services and Annexation for Property Along Lebanon Pike and East Jefferson Pike. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first public hearing tonight is for the annexation of the landfill property. You'll see the area on the map in front of you, combined with the right-of-way of Lebanon Pike that is included in the study area, totals about 827 acres. The right-of-way of Lebanon Pike is about 6,000 linear feet that is being included in the study area, and we did receive, Mr. Tucker did receive a letter from TDOT's council that, that they do not object to its annexation. That's the standard letter that, or standard email that is provided by TDOT when they don't object to a, the annexation of one of their rights-of-way. The property is located along the south side of East Jefferson Pike and is currently developed with the BFI landfill. It is partially zoned industrial in the county and partially zoned residential in the county. If the property were to be annexed, it would be zoned light industrial for half of it and RS15 for the other half. The property is directly adjacent to the Stones River and is also directly to the east of the Walter Hill Park, which is located along Lebanon Pike. The plan of services is included in your agenda materials, which shows how the city and other agencies can provide services to the subject property, and those details are in that plan of services. I will mention that the plan of services was amended after the planning commission's public hearing. One, because the planning commission took action to remove the right-of-way of East Jefferson Pike from the study area, as well as the, the very northern portion of Lebanon Pike right-of-way that was included in the study area when it went to planning commission, and that was primarily because the Transportation Department recommended that we exclude the intersection of East Jefferson Pike and Lebanon Pike from the study area because of the skewed nature of that intersection, as well as that would mean that we would take in part of the school zone for Walter Hill School, and that it made more sense to leave that under the county's jurisdiction. And so, planning commission voted to exclude those rights-of-way in accordance with the recommendations of our Transportation Department. In addition, the plan of services relative to the provision of fire and rescue services, that section was also revised to more accurately reflect the fire department's ability to serve the property. But with that being said, if you have any questions about, about the cities and the other utilities' ability to provide services, be happy to answer those questions for you. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on May the 7th, and at that time voted to recommend approval, subject to the exclusion of those rights-of-way that I mentioned earlier. We'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, and as I mentioned, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the, the plan of services for you.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Any questions for other staff? Mr. Huddleston?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Sam Huddleston, tonight. Just wanted to give you some perspective, and even our audience here tonight, on the City Council and City Administration's view on why, why we decided to annex the property. When the city entered a contract with BFI approximately 30 years ago to accept pre-treated leachate, the city limits and related development was roughly a mile to a mile and a half away from the landfill. As a result of the city's growth and development, city residents now live much closer to the landfill, and businesses within the city are now located less than a half a mile away from the landfill. In addition, the city operates recreational facilities in close proximity to the landfill, including some that are immediately across the river from the landfill. By annexing the landfill, we really seek to have some input on the, and oversight on the operation and maintenance and management of the site through our property maintenance, stormwater, indoor fire inspection, and other similar codes, to the extent practical and allowed by law. While the city cannot interfere, let alone prohibit, BFI's landfilling operations at Middle Point landfill, to the extent practical, the goal of annexations is to achieve oversight to ensure BFI and Republic's industrial operations comply with city ordinances. Annexation will result in some modest property tax revenue, and as the value of the property is changed, or improvements are made, or tax rates change, there will be a proportional change in our property tax revenue from that. And then, any future improvements on the site, anything that BFI or Republic may wish to add, will have to comply with our city's development regulations and standards, including the zoning ordinance, the stormwater ordinance, our floodplain management standards, our building code, our subdivision regulation, and any of the other myriad of land development rules. Here's what we're not doing. We're not annexing the property to advance, or support, or promote, or facilitate the expansion of the landfill. And we're also not proposing to prohibit, disrupt, or interfere with BFI and Republic's current operations at Middle Point landfill, to the extent those operations are authorized by state waste, air, and water permits. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have for city staff or city administration. I'll also have Mr. Gore and Mr. Tucker, who could add some additional color if needed.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston?
Sam, back in 1995, they agreed not to oppose annexation, correct?
That's correct. The outside-of-city sewer agreement had a statement in it that they would not oppose annexation.
Okay.
And we'd be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing as well.
All right. For those who are in the audience who've not attended one of our public hearings before, the podium will be open. If you'll keep your comments directed to the City Council, any questions that you have, we'll all be taking notes here, and we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. So, if you're representing just yourself, you'll have three, three minutes. If you represent an HOA or another group, you'll have five minutes. With that, if you come to the podium, if you'll just state your name and address, that's really all we need. So, anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation and plan of services request, please come to the podium. Public hearing is open.
Somebody's got to break the seal. My name is Shaw McGowan from 538 Dallas Court, here in Murfreesboro. A few months ago, at a public works meeting, County Commissioner spoke passionately, passionately about how Republic Services is not the same company that they were seven years ago, and I 100% agree with that assessment. Seven years ago, Republic was not working with the Tennessee Chamber of Commerce to overturn the Jackson Law, so that county, city, and the region would no longer have a say as to what happens with the landfill. Or as their general manager, Mike Klassen, says, "So that a very small number of people do not have triple veto power over landfill regulation." We are all that small number of people. You are all that small number of people. And now they want a few bureaucrats in Nashville to have all the power over us. Seven years ago, they were not fighting the city's right to annex the landfill because they agreed to it as part of the contract with the city. They were not sending out threatening letters to the mayor and the full council. Seven years ago, they were not actively trying to install their own candidate for county mayor, or they're not trying to pack the county commission with people sympathetic to their cause. Seven years ago, they were not paying a big Nashville PR firm to attend a town hall event and pretend to be Rutherford County citizens in support of the landfill. Seven years ago, they were not mailing out anonymous postcards to residents with the intention of misleading them about the expansion. Seven years ago, they hadn't sued our regional planning board in the city for denying them the first expansion. Seven years ago, about 70% of the trash coming into Middle Point was from out of the county, and now they want to increase that to 85%. Seven years ago, the city didn't realize how much the landfill was polluting our water and hadn't sued for that contamination. Seven years ago, while they were still the largest landfill in the state, they were not looking to expand almost 2,000 acres towards Betty Ford Road, thereby becoming one of the largest landfills in the country. Seven years ago, they did start to clean up their act, and they bragged that they had gone 30 months without a violation, which I guess is some sort of Herculean effort, because as soon as the county voted to stop negotiations with them, they've gotten four violations in the last five months. So I agree, Republic is not the same company that they were seven years ago, they're much, much worse. It seems that every time that things do not go their way, they find new and creative ways to make things worse for the city and the county, and I'm afraid that the trend will continue until we can put a padlock on the dump and close it for good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
Good evening. Dr. Jeremy Abur, I live at 3315 Yorkshire Court, here in town. I think you said things maybe more eloquently and poetically than I will, but I'm here to speak in support of annexation of the property in question. I think, yeah, seven years and plus, we have seen the kinds of behaviors that this company is interested in engaging in, the, the accusations against the city, in some cases outright lies about what the city is or isn't doing, some pretty underhanded things, getting PR people to pretend to represent our community when they in fact do not represent our community. I do not believe that we can trust the company that operates this landfill. They have had many violations over the years, as mentioned, excuse me, and they've shown repeatedly that they're not interested in behaving with goodwill towards the community here. I think if you did a poll today of the citizens of the city of Murfreesboro, and probably most of Rutherford County, you would find overwhelmingly that the people that live here do not support this landfill, do not support expansion, and I think that anything that gives us and our local community more control over how the landfill behaves and the actions they are allowed to undertake, I think that's a positive move. So I fully support the annexation of this land, so we have better oversight and more regulation in place to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I'm the president of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit citizen organization that has worked for ethical voter-responsive government since 1999. For the last nine years, we focused heavily on waste management, especially issues surrounding Middle Point. We understand that tonight's hearing is to gather public input on the proposed annexation and plan of services for the Middle Point area. Having reviewed the resolution, our members urge you to vote yes on the annexation. We believe it will provide the city with more oversight and therefore more accountability, something that has been long needed. That said, it's important for the public to understand why oversight matters in, so much in this case. Middle Point has a long history of violations issued by, by TDEC, and just since the start of this year, there have been, Shaw said, five violations. I thought there were seven, but there's a lot of violations, including unsatisfactory litter control, inadequate erosion control, failure to confine waste to a manageable area, and inadequate maintenance of leachate systems which can lead to water pollution. One of the most recurring violations is the failure, failure to properly cover garbage. Under Tennessee law, landfills must be covered daily with soil or an approved alternative. This cover is vital. It controls odors, deters pests, reduces wind-blown litter and fire risks, and most importantly, it protects our air and water. But here's the problem. The 2023 Murfreesboro 10-Year Solid Waste Plan confirmed that even Republic Services, the operator of Middle Point, is facing a soil deficit. This landfill requires tens of thousands of tons of soil just to cover each layer of fresh trash. That soil is now being stripped from the surrounding lands, land that was once productive farmland and forest. What's left behind are exposed rock shells that can't absorb rainwater, increasing flood risks and mosquito infestations. So not only is the landfill itself a dead zone, it's creating more dead zones around it, and wherever cover soil is sourced in the future. The irony is disturbing. The soil meant to protect the environment at the landfill is destroying the environment elsewhere. And when that soil isn't available, the landfill risks, risks falling out of compliance again, leaving garbage exposed and, and public health at risk. The RNA supports the proposed annexation and plan of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the council. My name is Eric Myers. I live at 7324 Appomattox Drive, which is, if that map was still up there, it's almost diagonally across the road from where this is. I've been here since, since 1998, and it seems like every four or five years, we hear the landfill's closing. The landfill's closing. Now, we hear they want a 50-year expansion. So, I just wanted to express, we don't need to repeat everything that's already been said, but I just wanted to speak out in favor of getting more eyes on this area of accounting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Hi, my name is Candida Lane, and I live at 2883 Sulphur Springs. Let's talk trash. Good evening. My name is Candida Lane, and I have been a resident of Murfreesboro for 20-plus years. I'm also the chairwoman of our Rutherford County Saukham Chapter, which stands for Statewide Organizing for Community Empowerment, and we are 52 years old all across the state of Tennessee. We were a part of keeping the landfill from being expanded the last time with our Stop the Stink campaign. I'm here tonight because our community is once again being asked to react to a landfill we didn't create and a problem we didn't bring on ourselves. But tonight, we have a choice. We can stay stuck in reaction mode, or we can take a proactive stand for the future of our community. Annexation of Middle Point gives Murfreesboro a rightful seat at the table, a say in decisions that affect our neighborhoods, our property values, and our quality of life. But annexation alone isn't enough. We need a long-term plan that moves us from being a dumping ground to being a leader in recycling, materials recovery, and economic development. That is why I strongly support the Tennessee Waste to Jobs Act. For too long, recycling and solid waste have been funded entirely by taxpayers. But around the world, and now in seven US states, taxpayers have said enough is enough. They've asked the companies that create packaging to be a part of the solution, and those companies have stepped up. Why shouldn't Tennessee do the same? This isn't just good for taxpayers and residents, it's good for Tennessee businesses that need the very materials we're throwing into our landfill. While waste companies fight for more space to bury them, the truth is, we could divert 40 to 50% of packaging waste and another 25% of organic waste if we only had the infrastructure and education. But we'll never get there without the funding that Tennessee Waste to Jobs can provide. It is a proactive, producer-funded solution that doesn't rely on new taxes. It brings private sector investment to our communities, something TDEC has repeatedly said we needed. Every year, TDEC's reports to the governor emphasize the same thing, Tennessee lacks the same sustainable funding needed to build infrastructure, expand recycling access, and educate the public. Tennessee Waste to Jobs answers that call. We have some of the brightest solid waste professionals right here in Rutherford County. They're ready to lead. They just need the tools and the funding that proactive legislation like Tennessee Waste to Jobs can deliver. Annexation is a critical first step. Supporting Tennessee Waste to Jobs is the next. Together, they offer us a future for our kids and grandkids to be proud of. It's time we stop reaching, reacting to the problems dumped on us and start leading with the solutions we create. This is an uphill battle, but we don't have to do it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
And I was gonna...
Sure. Have a gentleman walking from the back here.
Good evening. My name's Mac Nolan. I live at 831 Allen Road, Murfreesboro. Keep mentioning the Jackson Law. The reason the Jackson Law was put into place by our government was most of the counties in the state of Tennessee that time did not have zoning regulations to stop a landfill. So they put those in, so now that the counties do have that. Believe it or not, as late as 2020, there's still some counties that have not created that zoning on their own. Solid Waste Boards are in jeopardy right now. The company that we're talking about is trying to get those rules changed, where the Solid Waste Board does not have the authority that it has today. The authority written in the 1991 law is in there for a reason, and it's for the citizens of each county to protect themselves from large business.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Hi, everybody. My name's Cynthia Allen. I am a resident for over 30 years here in Murfreesboro, and I want to thank you guys for bringing this to the public, and also for you guys considering this annexation.
Did a poll today of the citizens of the city of Murfreesboro and probably most of Rutherford County, you would find overwhelmingly that the people that live here do not support this landfill, do not support expansion. And I think that anything that gives us in our local community more control over how the landfill behaves and the actions they are allowed to undertake, I think that's a positive move. So I fully support the annexation of this land so we have better oversight and more regulation in place to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I'm the president of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit citizen organization that has worked for ethical voter-responsive government since 1999. For the last nine years, we focused heavily on waste management, especially issues surrounding Middle Point. We understand that tonight's hearing is to gather public input on the proposed annexation and plan of services for the Middle Point area. Having reviewed the resolution, our members urge you to vote yes on the annexation. We believe it will provide the city with more oversight and therefore more accountability, something that has been long needed. That said, it's important for the public to understand why oversight matters so much in this case. Middle Point has a long history of violations issued by TDEC, and just since the start of this year, there have been, Sean said, five violations. I thought there were seven, but there's a lot of violations, including unsatisfactory litter control, inadequate erosion control, failure to confine waste to a manageable area, and inadequate maintenance of leachate systems which can lead to water pollution. One of the most recurring violations is the failure to properly cover garbage. Under Tennessee law, landfills must be covered daily with soil or an approved alternative. This cover is vital. It controls odors, deters pests, reduces wind-blown litter and fire risks, and most importantly, it protects our air and water. But here's the problem. The 2023 Murfreesboro 10-Year Solid Waste Plan confirmed that even Republic Services, the operator of Middle Point, is facing a soil deficit. This landfill requires tens of thousands of tons of soil just to cover each layer of fresh trash. That soil is now being stripped from the surrounding lands, land that was once productive farmland and forest. What's left behind are exposed rock shells that can't absorb rainwater, increasing flood risks and mosquito infestations. So not only is the landfill itself a dead zone, it's creating more dead zones around it and wherever cover soil is sourced in the future. The irony is disturbing. The soil meant to protect the environment at the landfill is destroying the environment elsewhere. And when that soil isn't available, the landfill risks falling out of compliance again, leaving garbage exposed and public health at risk. The RNA supports the proposed annexation and plan of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the council. My name is Eric Myers. I live at 7324 Appomattox Drive, which is, if that map was still up there, it's almost diagonally across the road from where this is. I've been here since 1998, and it seems like every four or five years, we hear the landfill's closing. The landfill's closing. Now, we hear they want a 50-year expansion. So I just wanted to express, we don't need to repeat everything that's already been said, but I just wanted to speak out in favor of getting more eyes on this area of accounting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Hi, my name is Candida Lane, and I live at 2883 Sulphur Springs. Let's talk trash. Good evening. My name is Candida Lane, and I have been a resident of Murfreesboro for 20-plus years. I'm also the chairwoman of our Rutherford County SOCOM chapter, which stands for Statewide Organizing for Community Empowerment, and we are 52 years old all across the state of Tennessee. We were a part of keeping the landfill from being expanded the last time with our Stop the Stink campaign. I'm here tonight because our community is once again being asked to react to a landfill we didn't create and a problem we didn't bring on ourselves. But tonight, we have a choice. We can stay stuck in reaction mode or we can take a proactive stand for the future of our community. Annexation of Middle Point gives Murfreesboro a rightful seat at the table, a say in decisions that affect our neighborhoods, our property values, and our quality of life. But annexation alone isn't enough. We need a long-term plan that moves us from being a dumping ground to being a leader in recycling, materials recovery, and economic development. That is why I strongly support the Tennessee Waste to Jobs Act. For too long, recycling and solid waste have been funded entirely by taxpayers. But around the world and now in seven U.S. states, taxpayers have said enough is enough. They've asked the companies that create packaging to be a part of the solution, and those companies have stepped up. Why shouldn't Tennessee do the same? This isn't just good for taxpayers and residents, it's good for Tennessee businesses that need the very materials we're throwing into our landfill. While waste companies fight for more space to bury them, the truth is, we could divert 40% to 50% of packaging waste and another 25% of organic waste if we only had the infrastructure and education. But we'll never get there without the funding that Tennessee Waste to Jobs can provide. It is a proactive producer-funded solution that doesn't rely on new taxes. It brings private sector investment to our communities, something TDEC has repeatedly said we needed. Every year, TDEC's reports to the governor emphasize the same thing: Tennessee lacks the sustainable funding needed to build infrastructure, expand recycling access, and educate the public. Tennessee Waste to Jobs answers that call. We have some of the brightest solid waste professionals right here in Rutherford County. They're ready to lead. They just need the tools and the funding that proactive legislation like Tennessee Waste to Jobs can deliver. Annexation is a critical first step. Supporting Tennessee Waste to Jobs is the next. Together, they offer us a future for our kids and grandkids to be proud of. It's time we stop reacting to the problems dumped on us and start leading with the solutions we create. This is an uphill battle, but we don't have to do it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
And I was gonna...
Sure. Have a gentleman walking from the back here.
Good evening. My name's Mac Nolan. I live at 831 Allen Road, Murfreesboro. Keep mentioning the Jackson Law. The reason the Jackson Law was put into place by our government was most of the counties in the state of Tennessee that time did not have zoning regulations to stop a landfill. So they put those in, so now that the counties do have that. Believe it or not, as late as 2020, there's still some counties that have not created that zoning on their own. Solid Waste Boards are in jeopardy right now. The company that we're talking about is trying to get those rules changed where the Solid Waste Board does not have the authority that it has today. The authority written in the 1991 law is in there for a reason, and it's for the citizens of each county to protect themselves from large business.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Hi, everybody. My name's Cynthia Allen. I am a resident for over 30 years here in Murfreesboro. And I want to thank you guys for bringing this to the public and also for you guys considering this annexation. I'm president of the Stones River Watershed Association, and we've been speaking out against these measures for quite a while, and we're very, very, very proud and thankful for the stance that the city has taken, the legal team that have done their best to try and protect these citizens. We are very much in favor of this annexation. We've been in this community working with the watershed since 2003, and these issues have continued to grow. And I think the biggest thing, too, that besides all the other issues that have been mentioned, is the drinking water standards. So Darren, I applaud you for the efforts that you've taken for the odor reports and being so, just thinking ahead of what this was going to mean for our community and the protections that we need for our drinking water. These new regulations that EPA has put forth leave our community very vulnerable with the state that the landfill's in. So I think this is what's going to move our city forward in order to protect the drinking water standards and for you to continue to protect that recreational area as well. And I have the utmost respect for the city and the ordinances that are here and the team. So we very much applaud this effort and want to support this annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Hello, good evening. My name is James Farley. I'm at 5111 General Eisenhower Drive, and I want to follow up on Ms. Allen talking about water. I'm happy to address the council and the public tonight to share my opinions regarding Middle Point. Voice support for the annexation by the city and voice support as well as gratitude for the work the city has undertaken regarding legal action against BFI and Republic. The information that follows is from my understanding of the city's amended complaint and from communication with those knowledgeable of the information. The information regarding contaminants is technical. I may confuse the terms PFOs, PFOAs, and PFAs. Individuals are encouraged to reference the city's amended complaint to verify the information that follows. With that being said, I'd like to talk about contaminants as well as location. BFI and Republic, they would like to say contaminants in Stones River are from the old county landfill. I'd like to reference locations that are mentioned in the amended complaint of the city. First locations are on the northwest corner of the landfill. They are Outfall 2 and also Bubba Springs. Both of those locations are closer to Middle Point landfill than they are the county landfill. Those locations were identified as Canary and the Coal Mine as sampling locations that were important to consider. Bubba Springs had contamination of 730 parts per trillion of PFOAs. They also had a chloride profile that was very similar to some of the locations east of the landfill. The locations east of the landfill are very important because they have the potential of having discharge that flows into Stones River and contamination. Locations east of the landfill are SCGW. It was a pathway designed for runoff by Republic. It has had contaminants of 280 parts per trillion of PFOAs. Another location of importance is Matthews Lake. Matthews Lake frequently receives and continues to receive runoff from the landfill. Contaminants from Matthews Lake can then travel by groundwater to Matthews Lake Springs, which is near Stones River. Then contaminants enter Stones River, and Murfreesboro City Department has a difficult job of trying to filter all that out. Jared Manning, from an environmental scientist, recently gave a talk about the water based on the samples he had conducted. And what he found was, there are very high levels of contaminants. He said the city of Murfreesboro is doing a great job filtering it, but they have a very, very difficult job based on the contaminants in the water that they're receiving. Based on his results, he was concerned about residents getting reverse osmosis systems for their homes. The EPA also, in something listed as UCMR-5, and last updated June 2, 2024, found in Murfreesboro's finished water at one point in time had six parts per trillion of PFOAs. The maximum contaminant level for the EPA listed is four parts per trillion. So as daunting as that sounds concerning as that sounds, in the future, as population increases, those contaminants are going to become more concentrated and become a greater problem. In addition to that, PFAs have received a lot of attention for carcinogens and causing cancer and immune disorders. There are also a whole list of unregulated chemicals and contaminants which are not included in that, which are also a concern. So with that being said, I'd like to encourage everybody to stay healthy and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Laura Clark. My address is 911 Netherland Drive in Murfreesboro. We've heard a number of voices here today, and the reason I support annexation is it adds another official voice to this conversation about the landfill, its operations, its expansion. And I support the annexation so that Murfreesboro can also become a voice in what is happening there. In my experience in the last year or so regarding the landfill, I'm concerned with the honesty and the integrity of the corporation we're dealing with. And the reason I am is, I attended a town hall, and I personally listened to the comments and the claims made by the representatives of Republic that night, but then witnessed when they said, "We care about the community. We're going to do what is best for the community." But then we can see with our eyes that that is not happening now. And so it causes me to question, if that is not lining up, what else is not lining up in terms of how they are engaging and how they are communicating and how they're actually acting? I'm only speaking from my own observations. Tennessee Waste to Jobs is very important here because when we finally, I hope, come to the decision not to expand the landfill, we will have options. We will have other options of how to dispose of solid waste. So, Murfreesboro, thank you for your opposition to the expansion of the landfill. I support the annexation. Thank you for this time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Melissa Farley. I'm also on General Eisenhower Drive. I have a finance degree, MBA, and a background in corporate finance and budgeting. I'd like to share my opinion about why we should agree with the city annexation plan so that they can help Rutherford County oppose Republic's 50-year expansion plan. Republic's plan shows 50 years of financial benefits with no expenses. Sounds too good to be true. We know the city has spent millions fighting the landfill in lawsuits for drinking water treatment, installing air monitoring stations, just to name a few. Here are two more giant offsets. Number one, a UC Boulder Environmental Center study talks about a lot of environmental and health factors that I would urge you to look into that other people have talked about tonight also. One point it makes, large landfills on average decrease the value of the land adjacent to it by 12.9% or an average of 50K per home in that area. If the landfill was closed and capped, Murfreesboro and Rutherford County real estate could be worth an average of 12% more in that area, according to this, other studies, and local realtors. That plus 2,500 new homes built in that area in 50 years, since I'm comparing this to the 50-year Republic numbers. With these homes and a modest increase in land value, together, this could be around $1 billion more in tax revenue to Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro over 50 years. I'm sure this is hard for people to even imagine what East Jefferson Pike would look like with just a large hill and without so much trash lining the road, but you can look at the old landfill and see a large grassy hill, and there are closed landfills around the country with high property values beside them. Number two, hundreds of citizens and property developers have spent hundreds of millions of dollars on real estate transactions in this area based on the Rutherford County Commissioner's 2018 decision to never allow expansion onto county property. For example, developers who have spent millions of dollars to buy nearby land have been contacted and are upset, thinking the landfill was going to be closed and capped. Nearly everyone we have talked to has been shocked this has come up again because, "My realtors told me this was closing." This wasn't the realtors being dishonest. They and we have heard for years, "This is going to be closed. This is going to be capped." I'm not sure the decision-makers, either the county or the state, if the Tennessee Chamber of Commerce gets involved, as we have now heard is a possibility, realize how upset people are going to be when they learn there's a possibility of allowing Middle Point to continue to pollute our air, water supply, and real estate for another 50 years. Rutherford County's contract is very one-sided, in my opinion, and they clearly have not been able to help fight Republic well enough. TDEC violations and citations have not been able to get Middle Point to do the right thing in our community. We need the city of Murfreesboro help to better regulate the landfill on our city's drinking water source. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Farley. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. We're going to close the public hearing, and we'll now consider the plan of services and annexation. This is ordinance 25, excuse me, 25 RPSA 23, council members.
Any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion, yeah.
You know, Shane, I mean, I moved back here in '98 with Claire, and you know, this is a $30 million to $40 million a year entity for them, so let's not be foolish as to why they claim to want to be a good neighbor. It's all about $30 million to $40 million a year. Yet they agreed in 1995 not to be opposed to annexation. But then they want to send a lovely letter to the council and to the mayor, which I thought was highly inappropriate. I thought that letter should have gone to you, Adam, directly regarding it. These aren't nice people. They don't want to play nice, and from my view, we need to annex it, bottom line, and get more oversight over it. Sean?
I agree. I think we need more oversight of it, so I'm for annexation myself.
I think the thing to talk about is why that we're going to annex it. There's been a lot of discussion. You know, we have countless industrial users that are inside our city, and those industrial users are partners with the city. They understand that we have water and sewer ordinances. They understand that we have noise ordinances. They understand that we have stormwater ordinances. And so I think that's, you know, we legally through annexation, this is not about stopping an expansion of the landfill. I wish it was. But the one thing that most of the people who are out there, I think there's not many things that we can all say that we 100% agree on, but this council, over the time that I've been here, has been very diligent about where everyone stands with expansion, and that's been a resounding no to expansion. So with that, you know, we fought for how many years, Adam, on the lawsuit? I don't even want to go before that, but...
We filed the lawsuit in August of 2022.
So we're going on almost three years of the lawsuit, and this council has voted to spend money to defend that lawsuit because we feel like this is something that is extremely important. So, you know, we see the different things that come across. We hear, you know, it's three years left on the landfill. It's five years. It's seven years. It's now nine years. I mean, that number moves all around. We hear the things that, "This is not us, it's you." You know, the ultimate Dear John letter. "It's not me, it's you." And so we've proven that it's not the city, it's not our sewer system that's causing the smell. We've had to spend thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars to be able to show that. So now we hear we have a solid waste crisis in Tennessee and that cities like Murfreesboro, I mean, I assume that's who they're talking about, saying that there's a minority, a small minority of people who are against stopping these annexation or, excuse me, these expansion requests. And I would submit to you, it's a whole lot more than a small minority of people who are against that. And I would say this publicly, and I've said this, you know, other municipalities, i.e. Davidson County, they need to find a way to handle their own trash, and they need to quit saying that, "We'll ship it down to Murfreesboro." And until, we have a great delegation in the state that's fighting for us. Brian Terry, Tim Rudd, Robert Stevens, Don White, Shane Reeves, Charlie Baum, Mike Sparks have all been diligent to say that they are going to fight, that the Jackson Law has not been repealed. So, but with that, I think it's important that, I read a statement that Middle Point had put out, that Middle Point does not oppose annexation and has not opposed annexation since 1995, when our business entered a contract. But I want to put up on the screen the letter that we received in April of this year...
Can you put where they quoted me?
...in the very last paragraph that is in that letter that says, "We hope the city will follow its statutory obligations where respect to the annexation of Middle Point and abandon the current unlawful procedure. As always, BFI remains amenable to discussion in its long-term relationship with the city." Now, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I don't think that something that says that we've not opposed annexation since 1995 and then the letter that they sent the city saying that this was an unlawful annexation sounds like that they were happy about us talking about this. So, you know, I'm supportive of annexation. I think annexation with our industrial partners in our community have been here for as long as we've been here, and we don't get a lot of complaints against industrial people that we're heavy-handed on them. That's something that we have to protect the residents. Lastly, I think it's safe to say this. There was a gentleman that talked about, Mr. Farley, I think, talked about the public record of the court with our lawsuit with what is supposed to come by July 31. The council will not try to hide anything from you. There has been a settlement that has been worked on for almost, how long, Adam?
We've been in mediation for 18 months.
For 18 months. That has to be presented in agreeance with the court by July 31.
That's correct.
And so we fully suspect with you all that we will have something that will be public in the next week or so. I don't think the council will disagree with this, but that will have to come to our meeting on July 31. That's no secret because that's what has been ordered. So we would love to have, as this is published, more comments from the community. I think the council will be okay that we don't have a public hearing scheduled, but we will, someone I hope would make a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to have a public comment section regarding that settlement agreement, and we hope everyone will come back on the 31st to not talk about annexation, but to give us your input on that agreement on July 31. Council members, any other comments?
I had jotted down some notes, but between you and you took the words out of my mouth. I agree. I agree.
All been said, I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. You know, this is how this works best, is when you offer your opinion and your perspective. We've been chewing on this bone for, goodness, I've always, you know, my whole life has been spent in this community. But I thought it's insightful that back in '95, somebody said to include within that contract the option for annexation. And I'm not sure, probably shouldn't have or couldn't have been considered before now. But the responsible and prudent thing to do for our government is to look out for the interests of our citizens. That's the only reason we exist. And while we don't always agree on how that is best accomplished, and I don't know that we can now see what annexation, how that is going to flesh itself out as we continue to work on this issue. But it does provide, and I think someone said that in their comments, it provides the city a place at the table. And that is the most responsible thing that I think we could do as your government, is to look out for the interests of our citizens and have a place at the table. As the mayor stated, there's several different benchmarks for this decision to, I think, accomplish what a lot of us would like to see in the future, in the near future. So your voice and your perspective, the work that you've done, doesn't need to stop here tonight. It needs to go forward and continue to have your voice expressed to the people that are making decisions for you. But tonight, I think you'll be happy with what we decide, and I would move that we adopt this annexation.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Ms. Tucker, please call the room.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gelsares?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mary Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move, I'm going to give a couple of minutes just to clear the room so that way...
Only if you want to.
Unless y'all, you want to stay. But I'm going to give a couple of minutes to clear the room, and then we'll get started back here in about two minutes. Matthew? Matthew.
Two biggest cops.
All right, let's go ahead and get started back. We have item 10, amending the PCD zoning for property along Dejarnet Lane. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is with regards to the Dejarnet Place PCD, which is located along the north side of Dejarnet Lane. You can see it in the blue on the map before you. This was rezoned as a PCD back in 2007. It was kind of a transition phase development, the front being more retail commercial, the middle being more office, and the rear being self-storage. It took Swanson about 10 or 12 years to begin working on the infrastructure for this project. The plat has been recorded and you can see right now, it consists of three lots and a detention area. And the streets, Sword Court, are platted. Swanson, as they have figured out now that this is 18 years after the first plan development approval, came to us with an idea to help make it, to adjust the plan based on current market conditions. And so we've looked at uses, looked at refining the list of uses, adding some uses to make it more flexible. And also, staff took the opportunity to work with Mr. Gerke over at the airport and the applicant to modify or to put restrictions on the maximum height of the buildings in the development to ensure that they would not violate the airspace of the airport. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on June 4th, and it was a really good, productive public hearing. There was a lot of good input from the neighbors. And the Planning Commission listened to all that input and ended up conditioning their approval on some modifications. And I'll read those real quick. "The required buffer along the eastern boundary of areas B and D shall be a type B buffer with a six-foot-tall privacy fence in addition to the standard buffer plantings. And the minimum height of all trees planted in this buffer shall be eight feet at the time of planting." So these are the areas that are the commercial areas that will adjoin the Bradford Place subdivision, which is located to the east of the subject property. Number two, the required buffer and fence along the eastern boundary of areas B and D shall be designed so as not to conflict with any existing or proposed utilities or infrastructure. And if located in easements, appropriate permission from the easement holders shall be secured. And number three, drive-in restaurants with drive-throughs shall not be permitted on areas B and D. And areas B and D are the areas located along the eastern boundary of this development. Drive-in restaurants were a point of contention from the neighbors. They did not want to hear the speaker boxes and some of the other negative impacts that come along with drive-through restaurants. And so the Planning Commission conditioned approval on it being located only on the west side of Sword Court. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval subject to these conditions. The pattern book has since been revised according to the Planning Commission's recommendations. And we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight and then vote on first reading. And Mr. Clyde Roundtree has a brief presentation that he would like to give you on the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, council members, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to walk you through the Dejarnet Place PCD. I'm here representing the Swanson Corporation. It's been a pleasure working with them. And they're going through a little bit of revisiting for their properties. They've had some long-term land holdings, and this is one of them. They're kind of looking at the opportunity to maybe expand the uses. And the previous pattern books are very definitive about the master planning and exactly how the buildings were going to be oriented. This provides them a little bit more flexibility with the future of the development. And so that's really why we stand here today, just to kind of create a little bit more opportunity for a wider range of uses and the, you know, kind of response to the market trends that are currently in place. With that in mind, I'll just go briefly, as Matthew mentioned, through the process of the project. This is... We're asking for the same zoning. We're basically just looking for a wider use category to be shared on this piece of property. Some of the key factors that came into play is the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport is a major factor. We're right on the flight line of the airport, so we had to incrementally reduce the heights of the buildings as you get closer to the airport, kind of working out the glide path for the planes. So all the buildings and the landscaping is in response to that. We are consistent with the land use plan for this area with the business park. We're just kind of changing a little bit the composition of the business park. Utilities are in place, as Matthew mentioned. It's been developed. All the utilities are now in place. Sewer water provided by Murfreesboro Water Resources. And there is a... On the back portion, there is a large retention area. That's really a general retention area, a regional retention pond. That's helping the neighbors to the north and to the east in terms of some of their drainage concerns. Overall, we are really kind of on the cusp of a commercial area to the east with the State Farm headquarters. And there's an undeveloped piece of property, I mean, excuse me, to the west with the State Farm headquarters, and then an undeveloped piece of property. And then to the east are established neighborhoods, as Matthew mentioned, Bradford Place and Hampton, the Hampton subdivision. We had a real productive neighborhood meeting with the folks. I love those kind of neighborhood meetings where we really were able to listen to them, respond to their concerns. And the pattern book, as Matthew mentioned, has been revised based on those concerns. Overall, it's turned into five various lots ranging from two acres to four acres. With that large green area in the back portion on the northern side, that's that regional detention area. In response to the neighbors' concerns, there's a dark purple line. That's a landscape buffer that will have a six-foot solid fence and eight-foot evergreens. The concession we were able to make, the neighbors understood this, is in lieu of having a lot of shrubbery that would typically be associated with this type of buffer, we'll have the fence, a solid opaque fence, as well as the eight-foot evergreens, but we won't have any shrubbery because that would be nullified by the fence. The purple and the orange that are on that eastern property line, the only difference is that we're varying the heights. So as you get, you know, again, further away from the airport, the heights of the trees can go up to 35 feet on the orange portion. On the red portion, the conditional buffer area, that's conditional in that the city staff's projecting the property to the west to go to more commercial development. So we are putting a stubbed street out there on Lidl Court and just preparing for the future. So if Site A or Site C gets developed, we'll put the buffer in at that time based on the conditions of what will be happening to the west. So that could very well be a perimeter planting yard versus a large buffer. We mentioned the airport protection. Just shows you how the heights vary as you move further back into the site. And then the prohibited uses, this was important. The industrial, I mean, excuse me, institutional group assembly, we were after discussing with the staff. That just takes, precludes the possibility of a large group of people gathering. And then all of a sudden, something goes poorly with an aircraft, and all of a sudden, there's 250 people in the flight line. So they want to limit that possibility. Gas fueling station, anything related to fuel under a flight line is not a good idea because that could really become a catastrophic event all of a sudden with some sort of an airplane crash. Retail shops, a tobacco vape dispensary, that was really related to the neighbors' concerns, making sure that those type of uses weren't that close to a retail, I mean, to a residential area. And the one that was very interesting was a drive-through restaurant. We originally had those on the front lots, but we moved them across the main street and the development to lots B and D in order to preclude any issues for the adjacent neighbors having issues with the, you know, with the call boxes and the drive-through boxes at the drive-through. So with that in mind, it was a really... It's been nice to see this project kind of morph into what it is now. We feel like we were responsive to the concerns of the neighbor. We appreciate the staff's support through the process. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? Thank you. All right, seeing none, we need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for that last vote, first of all. I'm Darlene Schleicher. I live at 706 Middleton Lane. And we are in the area that is most affected by the change. Previously in 2000... First of all, I've lived in our house since 1996. We built it, and we put our heart in it, and we put our finances in it. And we're retirees, and as is are several of our neighbors also. So this is really affecting us. And we're concerned about the possibility of having a artisan brewery in steps away from our backyard. We appreciate that concessions were made and, you know, that's very much appreciated. But we still have concerns and we would rather not have this retail establishment in our backyard. So, you know, when we first... They brought this up in 2007. We spoke to the Swanson folks. They said, well, you know, behind our home, at least it's not retail because at the time, it was office space. And, you know, unfortunately, because office space is not renting, now we have the possibility of this retail in our backyard. So one thing that I haven't heard mentioned that was on the first time that y'all heard this in 2007, they were going to preserve the tree line. We share a tree line with this development. And some of those trees were actually on our property and Swanson property because the trees are very large. So that was one thing that I don't think has been addressed, that those trees are great to shield us from what's behind us for, you know, most of the year. So I don't... I have a question about that, and I don't believe that's been addressed. I don't know if y'all can answer that or whether the Swanson folks can answer that. But that's one concern that I had, that that tree line, that they... They've already cut everything that I thought they were going to cut. But if they put up the fence, that's now under the new proposal. We want to maintain that tree line that we share with the development. So I appreciate it. I appreciate you letting me talk, and I hope to hear the answer to that question.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get that answered. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll consider for, on first reading orders, 25024. Mr. Blomley, we had a question about the tree line and how that incorporates with the fence.
So I don't know exactly how the fence would affect that tree line or I don't know that we've seen exactly where the fence would be located in relation to that tree line. I think that one thing that the applicants could do is, in their book on second reading, they could make a commitment to, to the extent possible, preserve that tree line during construction. Or Mr. Chris McGuire, the engineer for the project, is here and may be able to address their ability to preserve that existing tree line.
Chris, I don't think we talked about that tree line in planning, did we? We talked about it a lot, but I don't remember the tree line. Okay.
Chris McGuire, Huddleston Steel Engineering. I appreciate y'all taking time to hear me. A lot of the grading has largely already been done on site. Along the east side of the subdivision is a pretty large sewer main. And then we're also going to have a buffer. So we will have to work... We will be off of the property line with the buffer in all reality just to stay off of the sewer line. They will not let us put fence and buffer in the sewer easement. So I don't anticipate there being an issue with trying to preserve that tree line. I'd be happy to talk more with the client and try to get some of that in the pattern book or at least some, an answer to that before the next hearing.
So the trees that we're talking about are currently in the sewer easement on the eastern side?
They're just... Like, the property line is the start of sewer easement. So it just, it goes parallel with it.
Right, yeah. So because of the sewer easement, you don't anticipate any...
I don't anticipate any because...
Removal of the trees, right?
We'll have, yeah, we'll have to provide a buffer on our side of the sewer easement. So we shouldn't be over there anyways. As individual sites come, this is... We need to have it specified in the book. So as individual engineers come, potentially doing sites that they're aware.
And did we decide Class C buffer on the east side?
I believe it was B, if I heard correctly.
It was, Ms. Everwater, it was B, but the Planning Commission, instead of having a C without a fence, they changed it to a B with a fence.
With a fence, okay.
And eight-foot plantings.
And eight-foot.
Sure, okay. Great, thank you.
I think it'd be great before second reading if you could verify that with us.
I can definitely do some due diligence on that and verify it.
I can't see what Jamie's seeing, so I'd love to see it actually. Like, here's the sewer easement and the line, and here's the tree line.
Yes, sir. I'll work together and exhibit together that would better show you how that would look to scale.
Thank you. Mr. Roundtree, would you mind making sure that the homeowners also see a copy of that right in front of you? Thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, I do think it's important. Thank you for giving her your card. But, I mean, this is directly in the path of... This is directly in the path of the approach coming in on Runway 18. So whatever... I always laugh when I go by Cookout. You know, when we leave our council meeting and you go by Cookout on Memorial and they're cooking and it looks like there's a smoke stack just going crazy. We need to make sure, and maybe before second reading, that whatever that you guys are proposing there, if it's a restaurant or, you know, the last thing that you really want is someone that's frying a bunch of food and next thing you know, you're flying through a plume of smoke trying to land an airplane. So the height doesn't bother me, but the use does, knowing what's coming. If you watch, just stay on Dejarnet, see the amount of airplanes that are coming through there, that would be important. So that'd be, may be a question if y'all can answer in the second read, the second, before second reading.
I got a question for Darren. Darren, putting your Murfreesboro Water and Sewer hat on.
Yes, sir.
When I've had sewer issues, you know, and they had to get a truck back there, how much room do you need? Because you've got a sewer line. So are you talking at least five feet off that line or 10 feet? I'm just sitting here thinking if you ever had issues with that sewer line.
Well, minimum sewer easement width is 20 feet. Depending if it's a little deeper, you need to go to 30 and sometimes even 40 if it's very deep so that you can actually get a track hoe out there. And if you have to slope back the trenches so that, or get a trench box in there, you have to have enough room. So 20-foot minimum. I was just trying to look to see if I could find out what that easement width is there. But, yeah, there's no...
Right? Didn't we talk about that, Mr. Roundtree? It's 20-foot easement, right?
I'll verify it before our next meeting. But I, if I recall correctly, the Water Resource Department, when we recorded the plat, asked for additional easement, and we obliged and gave it to them. So I believe it is 20 feet on each side?
Okay, on each side.
Yeah, it's...
40 feet?
Well, based on GIS, it's 30. So it would be 15, it would be 15 feet each side of that line.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval on first reading.
Again.
Can we also, Jamie, would you mind, subject to that, subject to those comments? Well...
Can we also, Jamie, would you mind, subject to that, subject to those comments, well, those that forgot to come back for a second reading?
He has to come back.
Yeah, yeah, all right. We have a motion of second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to all motion items. You have the contract renewal timekeeping software.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item is a renewal of our citywide timekeeping software with UKG. This will move us into a multi-year agreement while still allowing for annual budget review. The estimated total over three years is about $385,000 with the upcoming year budgeted at approximately $128,000. 11% is covered by Water Resources with the remaining from General Fund. Happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, let's move to item 12, donation of used equipment to the Jackson Fire Department.
Evening, Mayor, City Council.
All right, I got confused because it's...
Fire Department.
Fire Department, but it has police next to it, so...
We'd like to ask tonight that you all consider the donation of expired body armor to the Jackson Fire Department in Jackson, Tennessee. We have multiple sets of expired armor and other used equipment that's no longer in use. MPD tries to assist other public safety agencies when possible and the Jackson Fire Department can benefit from the donation of this equipment. It's about 60 sets of expired body armor and they have requested that we transfer that over to them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, let's move to the state SRO program grant and school MOUs.
For your consideration tonight, we are hoping for approval of memorandum of understanding between the city and Murfreesboro City Schools and the Rutherford Collegiate Prep School for the submission of the statewide school resource officer grant. The department has been informed by the Department of Safety and Homeland Security that grant funds are available for the third year and to local law enforcement agencies after the agency completes the submission of an application for funding and a MOU between the law enforcement agency and the local education authorities. The SRO grant provides funding to local law enforcement entities to place one full-time, post-certified SRO in each K-12 public school and public charter school in Tennessee. Local law enforcement agencies are eligible to apply for funding not to exceed $75,000 per year per school for which they are responsible for providing SRO services. Currently, MPD has SROs on staff in 14 schools that qualify for a grand total of $1,050,000 annually. It's not known how long this program will be available. SROs provide a crucial link between schools and law enforcement agencies in their continued efforts to establish and maintain safe and secure learning environments. The total state award is $1,050,000, which will be used to offset the FY26 salaries and benefits of the SROs currently on staff with MPD. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
So RCP, they would be, I guess, the participating in this program?
They would, and that's a separate MOU for them being that they are a charter school. Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And Carrie, I think it's also, we, it was just announced that the Murfreesboro Police Department School Safety Division received the Model SRO Agency Award, National Association of School Resource Officers for its creative and innovative approach to school-based policing within the Murfreesboro City Schools, so that timing couldn't, couldn't be better.
The only one in Tennessee.
Yeah, it was quite the accomplishment and I have to give a lot of credit to Lieutenant Chris Williams and Captain Don Fanning and the supervisors and SRO of the School Safety Division. They did outstanding job.
Great job. All right, let's move to license agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric.
All right, final item for your consideration this evening is an agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric for the public safety camera systems. MPD is expanding the public safety camera system and will require to attach additional cameras on utility poles owned by MTE. The license agreement will govern the city's existing and future camera facilities on MTE's utility poles. This is a 10-year agreement with an annual fee of $40.34 for each camera plus the cost of any electrical usage. Additionally, there are minimal fees associated with the pole attachment, or application. Total expense per year is not expected to exceed $50,000 and these fees are budgeted for in the department's operating budget. I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 15, settlement for right-of-way easement purchases for Bradyville Pipe Widening Project Track 10. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. On April 4th, 2019, the city council authorized the acquisition of properties for the Bradyville Pipe Widening Project following receipt of certified appraisals. Offer letters were sent to property owners including copies of the appraisal and compensation for any damages as determined by the appraisers. The owner of Track 10 did not accept the initial offer. The case was referred to the Attorney General's Office, which filed for condemnation and deposited the appraised value with the court. During settlement discussions, the property owner agreed to accept an additional $20,000 to cover cost-to-care expenses, that's a legal term. This amount has been deemed reasonable and justified by the Attorney General's Consulting Engineer. The city has fulfilled its financial obligation for this project, so this is 100% funded by T-Dot. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 16, this is the First Amendment for the, First Amendment for the bulk fuel contract.
Good evening, Mayor and members of, members of council. I'm Kyle Lingo, Fleet Services Department. Tonight, we are bringing before you our First Amendment for renewal on our bulk fuel purchase contract with TriStar Energy. Our current contract will expire next month and we were wanting to get this renewal in place with TriStar. They were our lowest responsible bidder back when we put this out to bid, back in 20, early 2024. The fuel purchases from this contract will be used in city vehicles and the expected fiscal budgeted money for 2026 is roughly $3 million. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 17, this is the purchase of a Peterson Lighting Loader Grapple Truck. Mr. Crossick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council, good evening. Before you, as a request to approve the purchase of a Peterson Lightning Loader Grapple Truck with a reallocation of FY21 bond interest proceeds. The Solid Waste Department lost a truck due to a fire back in May of 25, I'm sorry, May of this year, due to a lightning strike. The replacement cost is $223,929. Environmental Products Group has this equipment available for immediate use and again, this expense is $223,929 will be funded with the reallocated FY21 bond interest funds and I'm available for any questions.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, you have a board and commission appointments, I should say, these are reappointments to the Water and Sewer Board from recommendation from the Water and Sewer Department. Kathy Nobles and John R. Santamore.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, yes, sir.
Just something to, and I was debating whether to do this in other business or at this point, but it doesn't apply to the appointments that we made tonight, but, you know, I had several people ask me about how do you apply to be on a board or commission and we've got that available, that application on our site. If it is a reappointment, I certainly understand it, you know, it's, don't necessarily need to do this, but if it is a new appointment or someone resigning from a, a position, could, could we allow that to be a, a period of time where people could make application and the idea, instead of recommending something, make notice of that open position on a commission and then let people make application to that, a, a period of time of a month or something like that, or a couple of weeks or whatever. It needs to be a set time, but they were saying, does, does the application have any meaning if I turn it in? And I'd like to give them some time before, you know, if, if a position is open on one of our parking wreck or something like that and, and it's a new position that's open, let there be a period of time that people could, we can accept applications and people can make application to that open position. If it's a reappointment, not necessary.
Sure.
I think, yeah, typically the way it works now is people will apply, those all go to Kenya and Brenda in, in the office. I, I do think we, one thing I had asked a couple of weeks ago and confirmed this with Darren, is that any application moving forward of a new appointment needs, the application needs to be in the, the packet so everyone can see that. Because that has, we, we always had done that, but somehow that had not been included. So typically what they do is all of those will be batched together and then as a, something comes across, then we'll pull that out. Now, the other thing too, Bill, we can definitely promote for people to apply for those. A lot of those recommendations will come from either the council or actually through, from the individual departments who they may, you know, like, I think we're going to have an appointment come up on the historical zoning commission and there are people that had inquired directly to the department to make that recommendation to us. That, that's just a thought that... No, it's, no. So the people, you know, that, that have an opportunity or want the opportunity to serve, there, there is a little bit of time before we actually make the appointment.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to beer permits.
Yes, we have three regular beer permits and three special event permits tonight. For the regular permits, we have an ownership and name change for a grocery market located at 106 Veterans. We also have two restaurants. One is a new restaurant located at 2222 Medical Center Parkway Suite A, and we have an ownership change of a restaurant located at 1720 Old Fort Parkway Seat, Suite C170. And we have three special event permits tonight. Two are for the charity circle. The first is for their summer supper event held on August 8th at 2825 Cherry Blossom Lane, and the second is for their tailgate fundraiser on September 12th at 1506 Georgetown Court. And then we also have a permit for the MTSU Foundation for their homecoming party on September 19th at 116 North Walnut Street. All applicants have met our requirements and we recommend for approval pending any final building and codes inspections.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.